Special meeting, today is Tuesday, December the 15th. We are in room 1010 and it is about 8:34 in the morning. If I can go through the agenda first. Do we have any consent items or any continuances?
There are no consent items, no continuance items. 10 items that warrant discussion although if you'd like you could dispense with item number three. There is a request from the department to refer this matter back to the department. And as much as there's new information that relates to the contract with the Nylons Solar Farm project, they'd like to review that information, add it to, and then bring it back to the council. We would actually have to disapprove without prejudice.
Okay, so we have to...
If you'd like to...
Send it back?
Yes.
All right, yeah. We don't have a quorum, so...
Like to hold it?
Yeah, let's hold it and see if we get a quorum. Okay, well then let's start with number one.
Item number one relates to Biona Creek Metals TMDL Implementation Plan by the Bureau of Sanitation. Actually, you could hear this item jointly with item number two since they both relate to TMDL implementation plans.
And let's hear item one and two and before we get into the staff report, come on up and, come on up, it's fine. Dr. Williams, why don't you come up and speak on items one and two? We're holding it, we're holding it, because we need a quorum to send it back. Dr. Williams, please.
First?
Let's give Dr. Williams three minutes since he's speaking on two items.
One and two. Basically the same comments on the same two issues. Outreach. They talk about stakeholders, but they don't talk about neighborhood councils, they don't talk about the public. There was stakeholders, yes, there were four meetings with stakeholders, total of 60 people. They held one meeting after considerable protests with neighborhood councils. There were about 20 or 30 people there. However, it was after the fact, after they had already developed it. Now, this whole thing is running on one basic element. We don't know where it's going and how much it's going to cost to get there. And they made an estimate about six months ago of $8 billion. Uh-oh. With $500 million a year just in operations and maintenance. So disclosure, visibility, transparency, informed consent. So, that's one thing. Technical. I did 40 years ago, street sweeping in Bakersfield to test the quality of runoff from Bakersfield because it accumulates over six months. EPA was having digesters being killed by the runoff because there was so much metals, so much PCBs, all sorts of things, DDT at that time. So, the metals specifically are different from what they represent. You can't really do them by normal street sweeping. So you're going to have to have water-based, vacuum-based technical elements which are not really included or described. The Biona Creek, the LA River, they both have wetlands in the bottom. If the silts and clays which contain most of the hydrocarbons, most of the metals arrive in those areas, they will be transformed because there's a transformation in a biological system which is not reflected in the studies that they've done to date. That is, it's called chelation. That is when it goes from an inorganic state to an organic state. This is a problem. You have to get it near the sources. And the current situation is, this program doesn't do it. But, long-term, where is it going? How much is it going to cost? Who's going to do it? This is not a isolated part in each one. It's an integrated program. The LID which is brought up in several cases doesn't work and it's basically going to provide a basis, well, we did the best we can, but it's going to cost you a lot more. $500 per plot per year on the county's property tax assessment. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Now, who are you?
Good morning, Madam Chair, I'm Karagony Bureau of Sanitation. I am here to brief you on items one and two. Items one and two both talk about metals and those are copper, zinc, lead, selenium that we have in both our water bodies, Bona Creek and also Los Angeles River. I start with Bona Creek and then I would brief you on the Los Angeles River. About two, three weeks ago, the city council adopted the Bona Creek bacteria TMDL and of course it had the big price tag of, you know, $500 million. But because that was the first TMDL for Bona Creek, the Bona Creek metals, all the projects that we described in that plan is going to also help us with metals. So, as a result of that, this plan for metals has only a price tag of $1 million because everything else that this plan is intended to do is going to be covered by the bacteria TMDL. But very briefly, we have deadline to meet by 2012 both for dry and wet weather. This plan, Bona Creek Metals, was because we are more than 80% by area in Bona Creek, the city's the lead. We worked with the cities of Beverly Hills, Culver City, Cal France, Inglewood, West Hollywood and Santa Monica to prepare the plan that I have before you. And it was done through a stakeholder-driven process, many workshops that we had on this plan. And we received very valuable, you know, comments from our stakeholders. And the plan has three approaches. One is what we call institutional, which is making sure some of the things we do in the city, for instance, street sweeping. I have been meeting with the Bureau of Street Services for years right now to make sure that, you know, we would change or modify some of the way that we do a street sweeping. So the metals and the issues of vacuumless and retooling, some of the things that we had, that is a part of the plan, but it cannot be done overnight. This is over years and has to take place. We are working as part of institution with legislative body to make sure that, you know, copper is removed from the break paths, lead is removed from the wells. So those are institutional and also we have projects that are regional projects that are huge, eight projects, and we have some more than 30 projects that are institutional. Collectively, this plan would meet the intent of the water board and we have done it quantitative analysis to make sure that the plans meet, the plans is due to the regional board by January 10, 2010. And as I mentioned, the cost is minimum because of the bacteria TMDL was the first one for the same Bona Creek.
Couple of quick questions.
Yes.
Your report noted that the SPA fee is entirely committed. So have you created or devised any strategy for looking at an SPA fund increase to pay for this implementation plan?
Yes, Madam Chair, what we have done, we are working very closely. I'm also happy to inform you that we have been working with the county of Los Angeles through, and both the chief legislative analyst and CIO and others involved. We have had a number of meetings that have, you know, shown a lot of progress and it is toward the goal of having a countywide fee that would cover the entire county. And as of right now, we have made, you know, tremendous progress. Just very briefly, it is going to be watershed-wide and we are hoping that that plan countywide and watershed-wide would deal to implement some of these.
Now, does countywide, is county included in this $498 million figure?
For the county of Los Angeles, for the Bona Creek, they created their own separate plan, but the cities that I mentioned to you, they are included, but not county. They have their separate plan.
All right, now the river's going to be subject to additional TMDLs, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and the pollutants, which additional pollutants are going to be covered by that additional TMDL requirement? And the projects proposed in this plan you've spoken about today, will that enable us to comply with the new requirements for TMDLs?
Yes. Madam Chair, the bacteria that you adopted two weeks ago in the full council is dealing with bacteria, is dealing also with metals because in a sense what we are doing, we are removing the runoff from getting to the water body and we're cleansing that. So it deals with bacteria, metals, it is also going to be dealing with what we call toxic sediment which is the next TMDL that is coming from Bona Creek. So these plans are multi-pollutant watershed-wide.
Okay. Do you have any questions, Mr. Garcetti? All right. Oh, sorry, okay, great. All right, you want to take those next? All right, well, this'll go without recommendation.
Would you like to hold it to see if we get a visual member or a communication?
Yeah, I mean, it's a communication. It's a quarter of nine.
Or you could forward it as a communication from the chair.
Forward it as a communication to the chair.
Okay.
All right. The one we have to hold is three because of the procedural issue.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Recommended approval on both as communication.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Let's skip over to four. I'm sorry, let's do eight, nine and 10 so Mr. Garcetti can...
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yeah.
Eight, nine, 10, Madam Chair, relate to three motions concerning similar positions requested through motion.
Right.
Ombuds person position, ratepayer advocate and inspector general.
Right. Now, what I'd like to do is... Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11. We have 11 cards on these items. If you could all come up and speak for one minute each, we can run the clock so we have time to do staff reports and everything we need to get done. Here's one more. Okay, all right. So, starting with, we've got four chairs, well, three chairs. Can somebody pull a chair up there for the fourth mic so we can get four people up at a time?
This one is tucked in.
Oh, it's tucked in? Okay, great. All right, Steve Twining or Twining, Donald Lowes, Clyde Williams, Pamela Berger. You can all come up to the table now. Donald Lowes, Clyde Williams, Pamela Berger. Is Pamela here? Pamela's here? Okay, just one more time. Is it Pamela Berger? Okay, she's not here, so I'll take her out of the pile. Um... Are you going to have a quorum? I don't know. You're going to go ahead and speak anyway, though. So... Okay, who wants to be? That doesn't affect your right to speak. Well, it affects your vote. No, I can forward it to council without a recommendation. Okay? So if you want to speak today, I hope you'll take advantage of that. Are you Pamela, ma'am? That's not me. Okay, DeeDee, okay. All right, Steve?
Okay. There are the three proposals in front of you. I would, first of all, like to make reference to a tape that was produced with Ms. Rita Robinson discussing the state of the city. Have you guys seen that by any chance? It was at a neighborhood council meeting last week and she says basically the city is in deep, deep trouble. You're letting go 2,400 employees and it's, I strongly recommend that you look at that tape. Number two, the IBEW is running the DWP and the whole city. And I think its recent actions in Council District Two show that perhaps money is not the only issue. There have been several proposals. I don't know the number of neighborhood councils who have requested a ratepayers advocate. I signed three cards, so for each of the three, do I get three minutes?
We're hearing them all together.
You're hearing them all, so I only get one minute?
We have about 15 cards now and we have to have staff reports. Is it possible for you to wrap up your comments?
I'll try to be brief. The original was proposed by Jack Humphreiville two and a half years ago. Councilman Huesar proposed an ombudsman. Greg Smith proposed an inspector general. Eric Garcetti proposed a ratepayers advocate, et cetera, et cetera. I'll finish.
Thank you very much. Donald Lowes?
Thank you, Mr. Sherman. Thank you for doing what you do. I came down about two months ago because some neighbors called my wife and my wife called me because I'm on our neighborhood board and on the neighborhood council and they said, "What's going on with the DWP? We just saw Mr. Freeman say there wasn't going to be any rate increase." That's it?
No, they're resetting the clock. Sorry.
I get an agenda for three days later, Mr. Freeman, the CFO, the CEO have all signed off requesting a rate increase. I've now dug into this activity. They took that off the agenda. But I've tried to understand the financial statements, I've tried to understand the material that hand out and there's been a request which apparently is an attempt to put us together with some financial people. But citizens who, like me, don't want to be in the business of understanding all this arcane stuff would just like to know that somebody who's responsible is doing it. And I think all these proposals could be put into one, whatever you call it, do it. We hope the council will support such a thing. Last night at our Canyon Association, one of the local attorneys who's had a lot to do here in the city came down to propose just a simple new bill. The bill is so arcane, you can't understand what it is and it's been perpetuation of arcane information to keep us in darkness. And we think we'd like to have somebody standing up for us to explain what's going on. We hope we'd encourage you to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Williams?
All three items. Basic elements, transparency, informed consent requires information. If you don't have the information, how can anybody do anything in any one of these three? So what is the authority of this person, whoever he may be under whatever title? What is his responsibility or hers? What is the accountability? Accountability to whom? To the DWP, to the Board of Water and Power, to the council, to the mayor? They all have great deal of implication as to what the people hear and what the people know. I am a liaison and it was in board meeting where the attorney for DWP stands up and says, "Practical is defined by DWP, not by the neighborhood councils." So what do we get? We get an out-of-date budget on one Saturday morning, we get some information, but access to all information? God help whoever is the ombuds person, the inspector general or the ratepayers advocate. By the way, CPUC has a very good one. Thank you.
All right, one more time for Pamela Berger.
Hi, good morning. I'm Pamela Berger and I'm here on behalf of LUSD School Board on Birchmore Gallatin who represents the West San Fernando Valley. I'm going to be reading a letter on her behalf. On Tuesday, December 8, 2009, the Los Angeles Unified School District Board of Education unanimously approved a resolution that I sponsored in support of Councilmember Greg Smith's motion to create a Department of Water and Power Inspector General. Since LUSD is the largest customer of the DWP, spending nearly $60 million annually in electricity and $5 million in water, the district has a strong interest in ensuring that the agency is responsive to the concerns of the public. Over the course of the past year, LUSD has been working diligently with the DWP on a variety of issues including rate discounts, long-term contracting, solar power incentives and placement of power pools near school sites. Unfortunately, the DWP has not yet responded affirmatively with actions that would save taxpayer money, help support cities and the district's renewable energy goals and improve the environment. It is my hope that through Councilmember Smith's motion, the creation of a DWP independent monitor will ensure that taxpayer funds are being used in the most effective manner possible. For the good of public education in Los Angeles, I encourage the Los Angeles City Council to approve this motion and restore transparency to the DWP.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, everybody. I'm going to call the next round of people up. Nicole Burnson, DeeDee Audet, Evan Gillespie and Jack Humphreiville. Okay, Ms. Burnson?
Thank you, Nicole Burnson, speaking on behalf of Councilmember Greg Smith. Good morning. Recent events such as the water main breaks and system deterioration of the infrastructure, rate increases, attempted removal of the ECAF cap, accelerated renewables while the cost of current mandate is skyrocketing, excuse me. All these have raised questions about DWP's management, their handling of critical situations and have created a lack of public trust and a lack of transparency, all which need to be addressed. We would encourage the committee and also the council to look to successful models of inspector generals or ratepayer advocates, including the charter change in 1995 that created the LAPD's Office of Inspector General. We also wanted to say that we think that the ratepayer advocate and the inspector general, both of these entities should be completely independent but should work together. And I'm here to answer any questions if there are any.
Thank you. Evan Gillespie?
Thank you. Here on behalf of the Sierra Club. The Sierra Club believes that protecting ratepayers and the environment go hand-in-hand. Our expectation of the DWP is that it'll operate transparently, be accountable to the public and conduct business in pure energy and water in ways that promote environmental stewardship. To achieve these outcomes, it is essential that timely, accurate and thorough information be available to decision-makers and stakeholders. In looking at approaches to improve the quality of information available to decision-makers who, after all, are charged with weighing good information and then making choices, it's important that the city council not duplicate existing capacities. It is also important that it not create an entity that will be perceived as politicized. Rather, the city council should consider how best to ensure that decision-makers have the information they need, when they need it, have the ability to execute needed audits, establish accountability and know that consumers are getting effective information that allows them to make decisions they need to make regarding clean energy solutions. City of Los Angeles already operates in a complex environment of decision-making about its utility very quickly. At the same time, we must move forward quickly and at large scale on energy efficiency, demand response and renewable energy investments. Our concern is that further delays will not only reduce our chances of meeting the challenges posed by climate change, but the city will lose out on a tremendous opportunity to attract the type of business investments that will drive the 21st century economy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Audet?
Thank you. DeeDee Audet here from Venice. First, it's pretty much everyone else has emphasized transparency, transparency, transparency. I will be reporting the results of this meeting here this morning to our meeting this evening in Venice and I know you're going to do the right thing for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Humphreiville?
Good morning. My name's Jack Humphreiville, Greater Wilshire Neighborhood Council. Whether it's the ratepayers advocate, the inspector general or the ombuds person, who cares? Just as long as we get something that can give us greater transparency. It has been endorsed by a majority of the neighborhood councils and a number of other organizations. Quite frankly, I think one of the biggest beneficiaries will be the city council. There's a lack of credibility on the part of the DWP, its management and its Board of Commissioners. And quite frankly, the council's been bagged. All I have to do is say, "Measure B, the rate increases which are going to be 3%, which are 20%, the ECAF, the infrastructure, information with regards to water blowouts." We want transparency, we want information. And quite frankly, as the ratepayers advocate, the IG or the OMAN will also act as a foil for you. It will allow you to rely on an independent party to give you good information. That way, you know, the mayor, the environmental community and others will have to clear their information and their facts with this new body. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Stuart Waldman. Stuart Waldman?
Hmm.
He's not, he's not. Okay.
Hi, Stuart Waldman, I'm president of the Valley Industry and Commerce Association, VICA. We represent more than 340 businesses who employ over 50,000 employees. We're here today to oppose these measures. Well, we oppose the inspector general and we oppose the creation of the ratepayer advocate. We feel that there's extreme duplication here. There are already people in place to do this job. The controller can audit. The Board of DWP Commissioners act as a protector of the public. They're appointed by the mayor, they're appointed by, so they represent the people and they're in a position to actually take care of this situation.
You want to let him finish his time?
No, he can finish, I'm just asking you...
Okay, I'm sorry. When business looks at a situation, we look at, how can you streamline the task? How can you make it more efficient? It's unfortunate it appears that when government looks at a task, they look at, how do you add another layer? How do you cost more money? This is a concern that we have and this is why my board of 80 business owners in the San Fernando Valley voted to oppose this measure, these measures.
Thank you.
My question is, is DWP a member of your organization?
Yeah, DWP is actually a founding member of the organization.
It's a founding member? Is it the largest member?
No, it is not.
What's the largest member?
The largest member is Wells Fargo.
Wells Fargo?
And DWP is not within the top 10 members. We'd like them to be, but they are not.
What do you mean you'd like them to be?
I'm sorry?
What do you mean you'd like them to be?
Well, we are a membership organization and we ask members to participate in events. We do not take any policy.
So your top 10 members all have more than 10,000 employees?
Um, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, but we do not take any policy based on what a member asks.
I'm sure you don't.
Thank you. We've got some more cards and I'll call them up to the table at the same time. Eric Sanjuro, Barbara Monahan Burke and Nick Potzouris. Mr. Potzouris, yeah, come on up now.
Good morning, Eric Sanjuro, City 14. Just wanted to read a quick statement from the councilmen. It has been nearly a year and a half since my initial call for the creation of an ombuds person, positioned to provide independent and neutral analysis of proposed DWP rate increases and restructurings. Since that time, there have been numerous examples of why such a position is needed. I'd like to reaffirm my support for this concept today and expand on my vision for its structure. My motion mentions several different kinds of oversight or watchdog positions that exist in other government agencies, including the state's Division of Ratepayer Advocates. The recently adopted Measure A to create a position of independent assessor to track the progress of the LAPD in implementing reform, which reports to the Board of Fire Commissioners, may be the best comparison that can be made of what we would like to see happen at the DWP. An ombuds person or inspector general, whatever the term is we use, could report to the Board of Water and Power Commissioners, which currently does not have any policy staff of its own. Commissions overseeing the LAPD, Fire and Board of Public Works all have their own full-time policy staff which they can instruct to research matters. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Burke?
Barbara Monahan Burke, Studio City Neighborhood Council, Board Member and Government Affairs Co-Chair. We have a community impact statement on file to do with supporting a ratepayer advocate. It is most important that it be totally independent. We've had a lot of problems as a neighborhood, as Studio City, to do with the Department of Water and Power not being transparent, to do with what they put forward. One of these would have been Measure B, which certainly had no transparency. So we ask that this be totally independent, person with the necessary staff and that there be total transparency to do with the DWP because it just has not been done and we do deserve that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Potzouris?
there be total transparency to do with the DWP, because it just has not been done, and we do deserve that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Patsouris?
Honorable members, I was not going to speak, but when I hear lack, and I see lack of transparency and full disclosure, VICA, I went before the two committees, government and the energy and environment unanimously approved the concept. And then at their board meeting, a lobbyist, you can infer why a lobbyist fought the concept. So I think it was disingenuous from the representative of VICA to come and say, "Our board opposed it," when two committees heard the arguments and they supported it. Thank you.
Are you a member of VICA?
No.
Thank you.
Do you like to come up?
No.
Thank you very much, and I believe that will close off the public hearing. Now, if we can get staff to come to the table. I know, it is what it is.
Are you a member of VICA?
Are you now or have you ever been a member of VICA?
All right.
I'm a hard- carrying VICA man.
Now, just a couple of comments before we get into this. I'm gonna ask for a number of report backs, and I think my colleagues may too, but Mr. Freeman, the genesis of these three very similar motions relate to the general lack of frustration, lack of trust that the public is feeling, and I think it is reflected through the elected officials who initiated these motions. That's number one. Through these motions, I want you to respond to these issues, probably if you can today, but also subsequent in writing. Since the matter was last heard, the committee did request from DWP a report on the pros and cons of creating an ombudsman ratepayer advocate position modeled after the state's division of ratepayer advocate. I don't know if you're prepared to report on that today, are you?
I don't have a written report, I'm prepared to speak to the subject.
All right, I'm gonna, let me just go through this list, and I'm going to ask the city clerk and the CLA to reiterate this for the department, because I want this in writing, and I want it in the report back.
Yes, ma'am.
All right? I want you to tell us, since the matter was last heard, we asked you to give us a response of the pros and cons of creating an ombudsman ratepayer advocate position modeled after the state's division of ratepayer advocate. That's one. I also want you to give us an assessment of the ratepayer advocate position in DWP, because the level of oversight that already exists and the potential cost of that position or that division. I also want an assessment or some response on the board's specific rationale for wanting or not wanting a ratepayer advocate, because I think I know what your position is. And then the rest of the questions, actually, I have to give to the city clerk. So why don't I stop with that now, and then let you speak, and then we'll go through the, myself and the subsequent members, and then we'll come back to you, come back to you. But I, I want these answers in the next report when you come back, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
So why don't you go ahead and make your presentation? What do you have to say today?
I have spent my adult life managing large public power agencies. I have run the New York Power Authority, Tennessee Valley Authority, the Lower Colorado River Authority, the utility in Sacramento, and LAPWP. I'm speaking to you as a friend of this council, as a public servant in Los Angeles, and I speak on the basis of my experience. This is a very appealing idea. The public is frustrated because something that is essential to them, a bill they have to pay, has been, is going up, and I understand that in the depth of my being. And there is a, a strong feeling out there that somehow or another, prices, the price of electricity doesn't need to go up because people are hurting, they don't have the money to spend more on electricity. And that is a, that's a situation that is very real. I can tell you, though, that this council, in the coming months, will have the responsibility of approving a new general manager for DWP. And if that person is not fully charged with the complete responsibility for transparency, keeping the rates as low as possible, all the things that people are complaining about, if that burden is not placed upon that new general manager, there is no combination of ratepayer advocates or inspector generals or anything else that is going to get the job done. The general manager is in charge of 9,000 people, and information is power. You cannot duplicate the DWP staff. You've got to hold me and my successor fully and completely responsible, and if we don't cut the mustard, we need to go. There is no, you can create a ratepayer advocate, and it, it will make the job harder. There is already the, the CA, the chief legislative analyst, the chief administrative officer. I've worked in city government, you know, a fair amount of times. City government is hard to get anything done, and there are all kinds of people that can say no. There's always no one that can say, "Yes, we're running a public business that requires action." We are in the middle of the largest transformation in the history of the energy industry, from fossil fuels to renewable energy. That transition needs to be handled with great skill. It does involve upward pressure on rates, that pressure needs to be as low as possible. But unless you hold the new general manager that succeeds me fully responsible, in my humble opinion, you'll be making a critical mistake.
Hey, Mr. Freeman, let me ask you a quick question. You know, I don't know if you had a chance to look at the report from December 29, 2008, by Mr. Nahai. Did you have a chance to look at that?
I, it's not been called to my attention. I'm sorry.
That's, that's fine. Okay, that's fine. Do you, there are other staff here from DWP who I think will probably be speaking.
There are other matters before you, Madam Chair.
No, no, on this, these three items, eight, nine, and 10.
We don't contemplate other speakers from DWP, but they're here at your disposal.
Okay, well, I think you need some help on the specifics. So are you, you, you gonna speak?
Sure, I, I would add this to the comments of the general manager.
All I can say is I appreciate your comments, Mr. Freeman, but they don't really address the specifics of what I, what I asked for. I, I guess I'm clear that you oppose these proposals. Is that the final, the final analysis, is that what you're saying?
Well, yes, ma'am. I, I think that if the general manager is not the ratepayer advocate, there is none.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, yes.
The only thing I wanted to add to David's comments was this personal and, and policy note. David asked me to come to DWP a short time ago, and one of my charges was to address the central issue that you folks have heard about this morning over and over again, and that is, it quickly referred to as transparency. It's one word, it can be skimmed over too quickly, and, but under that word, I think we need to understand, there needs to be a very deep understanding between the DWP, city council, and the citizenry in LA in general, what David just spoke about, the massive transformation we are going through, moving from fossil fuels into a new era of renewable electrical energy. That is an amazing and difficult process. DWP, I will be blunt, needs to do a better job of leading the understanding of that among its own ranks, among city council, and among the Los Angeles citizenry, and we are absolutely committed to doing that, certainly under the energetic leadership of Dave Freeman, and we look forward to having a general manager who will hold us to that task.
Okay, thank you. Uh, there's no other speakers from DWP? All right, let me just go through my, my list, and then obviously we're gonna have to get some further analysis, Mr. CLA. One, I want to ask the CLA and the CAO and the city attorney if we can consolidate these three motions into one. I want some additional information, analysis of how other boards, such as the Metropolitan Water District, are determined and how this process works. Number two, number three, I want to look, an analysis of restructuring of the DWP board and the viability of an elected board and/or a requirement of rate-making and utility expertise to serve on the board. I would like an analysis of whether or not this independent oversight body can sit on the LAPWP board to provide comment and analysis or have the ability to vote as a board member. Please look into the possibility of a third-party analysis to look at DWP's rate process, the Public Utilities Commission, and other models such as MWD. Also, I want an analysis in the rate structure process, the rates at other private and public utilities, and the budgetary impacts of having an independent oversight body. And then three more points, I would like an analysis or a response as to whether or not there needs to be a charter change amendment in order to implement a fully independent ratepayer advocate, or as an alternative, can a position just be created, and, and if so, give us some options. In relation to this, let, let's clearly delineate, if you can, the authority of the board or general manager in that scenario. With respect to the IG, according to the motion on the table, the IG would have complete and unfettered access to all records, personnel meetings, and contracts without any interference from any entity, and give us an analysis how we can go ahead and fund and create a position like that. And I'm assuming that that position would be similar to other IGs that we have, not only here in LAPD, but the county sheriff's department. And I believe that is, that will be it for me, and then Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and I'm here just as a visiting member of the council today, and I want to thank everybody for their, their comments. I want to thank Councilwoman Perry first, as our chair, in shepherding all of this through councilmembers, Wizar and Smith for their motions, which were seconded by councilmembers Perry, Wizar, Smith, Alacon Reyes, Parks, Corretts, and Han. We clearly have a majority of the council that is interested in something here. And I think that, I want to say a few things. One, I agree with what both of our very able and accomplished and, to me, inspiring leaders at the DWP who are before the table have said to us. It gives me a lot of faith that both of you are there. At the same time, I think our, our country and, and good government is built on a system of checks and balances. And you're right, the checks and balances are here, checks and balances are on the third floor with the mayor and with the commission. The difficulty is, we don't have the information to be a good check and balance on, not a reflection of any individuals that are there right now, but over time, we know that there are good and bad leaders who come through DWP, that, that will be a given. We hope that it's not, and we hope it's always gonna be good leaders, but it's not. It just, history bears out something differently. And what we need to be able to have, and with due respect to our great CLA and our great CAO and all the entities that you gave us, we don't have the tools to make the analysis on rates that we should. Now, Mr. Knox said we have to, we have to do a better job in explaining this transformation, and Mr. Freeman also mentioned it too. And, you know, when he said on the council, too, you know, the council led the way on this long before the department did, long before the kind of environmental community mainstreamed this. I remember Alex Padilla and I, seven and a half years ago, when Ron Deaton was sure he was going to renew a coal, our ownership in a dirty coal plant that was out of state but nevertheless had a huge impact, and he was sure he had the votes, and it was, I'll never forget the look on my friend Ron Deaton's face when we actually rallied a few votes, and Alex and I didn't think that we would do it successfully, and it was a tipping point moment where we realized we had a council that was committed to a greener path and a greener future. So I think we know that, and we get that inherently, but now you're talking to somebody who considers himself as green as anybody in terms of, of that transformation, but who has lost faith and gets reports that says, "Please increase rates this much," and I can't justify it. I can't justify it. I know it in, I, I recognize the upward pressures, I know we're going to have to do it, but if I can't communicate to myself, can't communicate to my neighborhood councils, can't communicate to my constituents exactly why, then there is a breakdown there. Now, I think some of that can be solved by management, but I think this is a great opportunity for us and for, for you as administrators, for us as policymakers, to have two different tracks here, and I'm supportive of both of them. One, and Mr. Alacon and I were just talking about this, one, some sort of ratepayer advocate or ombudsman person, the O-Man, as I heard him describe, or O-Woman, and somebody who could advocate and do some analysis, just really looking at rates. I think that's important. It's like the reader's representative at the LA Times or New York Times, somebody who is not politicized, I'm not looking to swing a pendulum so far to politicize something this way, but I think it's somebody who's not pushing with any agenda for the rates and not pushing on the other side to say, "My whole goal and my whole role is simply to tell people, 'Don't ever increase rates,'" because there are gonna be times we're gonna need to, and we're gonna have to have that conversation with the people, and we're gonna need to do that. I think that the issue with the bills is something that I'm very passionate about, too. It's a great project for us. We could make the model bill for a utility in the United States of America, plain English, colorful, explaining what the city charges are versus what the utility charges are, explaining what the acronyms that are there that we kind of take for granted, but there's never plain English explanations of it. A ratepayer advocate can, can help do that. The second track, though, is this inspector general track, which I'm also supportive of, but I think also because it will inherently perhaps take some charter changes, is a longer-term project. So I'm interested in the short term, getting somebody there in place that can, not by charter, not by a vote of the people, but in the shorter term, advocate on rates for the people, can say, it's not for the people to get lower rates, it's for all of us to have a second check. Nothing more, nothing less. The, the resources to be able to do a second, you know, a second opinion on this. Hold on one second, I eagerly await your responses. But to me, if we are able to do that in the shorter term, and to do that in a way that actually enhances, I think what I've heard many of the speakers and our chair and others talk about is very important, that they have independence. I think they have to be selected with multiple oversight, because if it's just the mayor's person, if it's just the council's person, if it's just the, the board's person, then they're gonna feel beholden to that. But if we together choose that, kind of the way the Ethics Commission works right now, is you have the city attorney, the city controller, the president pro tem, the president, and the mayor each get one. Once they're on, they can't be thrown off by those same people. That's the sort, the sort of independence that would allow somebody to be in there. And, and secondly, they have to have independence, that they don't work directly for the, the general manager, the CEO of our department, but that they're able to report directly to the commission and to the council. That is essentially, I think, the vision that we've seen, we've looked at those models throughout the country. New Jersey has a very interesting model in terms of their kind of ratepayer advocacy, and it can do nothing but help us. Because if you can better sell that, and people can see those numbers to be true, and you can defend them, it's not gonna be an adversarial relationship, it's something that will help us all do better and more transparent, and ultimately more progressive work. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Freeman, you want to make a comment?
I would like to, because President Garcetti's comments have inspired me to try to think through how I can be helpful to this council in thinking through this. It is very clear to me that the council needs a staff of its own to really understand rates and things like that, and I would think that it would be an excellent idea for DWP to actually provide the money for the CLA's office to, within that office, to form a staff group that would be very knowledgeable about rates and things like that, and so that when we come to you with rate proposals, you will have a staff of your own that is fully, completely devoted, dedicated to that one task and knowledgeable. Knowledge is in the benefit of everyone. The problem, I think, with the ratepayer advocate, and there is no public power agency in the country that has one, is that it is just fundamentally contrary to the mandate of the manager. Public power, only reason for existence is to try to keep the rates low and promote economic development and things like that, and therefore, you know, the ratepayer advocate in California, I know what they do, they, they are a low-rate crowd. They, they feel their job is to, is to raise, is to raise... is to ra, is to, uh, raise issues with everything. You've got organizations that are opposed to spending money to beef up the transformers for electric vehicles because they're the ratepayer advocate, it's gonna cost a little bit of money, and the environment costs a little money. I am just very frightened, frankly, personally, of creating someone that's not gonna do what you have in mind. You have a real need, the consumers have a real need for expert appraisal of what we propose. And I, I would, uh, uh, go to work to try to, to help, uh, you create, uh, the staff resources that are solely yours, that are under no influence of-
I'd like to just interrupt you, Mr. Freeman, I, nobody has had, made any request, just for the record, for us to have any staff that is solely ours, so just so we're clear, I'm, let, poll the rest of the committee members. I am absolutely not interested in any proposal that would entail us having any staff for ourselves. So, as far as that proposal's concerned, I, I just want to let you know, uh, you don't need to pursue that any further. I appreciate your advocacy, but, uh, I'm not interested in that. Um, and if you would, Mr. Garcetti? All right, Mr. Alarcon and Mr. Carter's has joined us.
Madam Chair, I'll have to run, but I thank you very much for including my comments, I appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Mr. Alarcon?
You, uh, Mr. Freeman, you said that no other public agency has a ratepayer advocate?
No other public power agency.
So you're saying we could be cutting-edge here in Los Angeles?
Well, and people on the cutting-
That's something politicians just love to do, you know that, right?
I might, uh, reverently add that sometimes on the cutting edge, we bleed a lot.
Thank you for that, uh, that enticement. Um, yeah, I've been affiliated with, uh, uh, the Department of Water and Power as, as a city council member for, uh, eight or nine years now. And, uh, dating back to 1993, and of course, uh, as the, uh, Valley Representative for Mayor Bradley, uh, even longer than that, uh, and, and worked most closely with, with VICA. I, the, um, you know, the, the truth is in the details. Uh, because, because the, the, the truth is that, in a general sense, the, the public doesn't trust the Department of Water and Power. Uh, and, um, and they believe that they are being overcharged. That's just, if you, if you polled, if you polled the people of Los Angeles, whether it be a business or a, or a residential customer, they would say they're being overcharged, by a vast majority. So, whatever, whatever, um, the department is doing, whether it be effective or not, uh, the public doesn't trust ya. So the council is in a position of getting bombarded as the overseers of the department, the true overseers of the department. Um, we are getting bombarded by a bunch of people who don't trust you, and we keep going back to the same people to, to gain their trust. Ain't gonna happen. They don't trust the general manager. They don't trust the Board of Commissioners, with all due respect to all of y'all, to put it in your vernacular. They, they do not trust the department as a whole. They need somebody that they can trust. Because if they had somebody they could trust, they might have passed that solar bond measure. When, when we introduced the, uh, ratepayer advocate at the state, I didn't see the world fall apart. In fact, I saw a lot of people get a lot of problems solved. When I first came back to the city council a couple of years ago, the low-income, uh, discount rate was, was the lowest, had the lowest penetration rate, uh, in the state of California, as compared to Edison, PG&E, and others. Because you are not under the ratepayer advocate in Sacramento. I believe that with a ratepayer advocate, that discount rate would have penetrated by comparison to Edison at 90%. Still not there, and if it were not for the, the commitment of Mr. Patzoris, it wouldn't be where it is today. So, this is a discussion, David. Uh, you, you said your piece, in fact, you, you said it twice, because you said the same thing the second time. I'm not trying to be disrespectful, but nothing's gonna change unless we change it.
Good.
The city, the, as long as the city contributes $200 million to the general fund, they're not gonna trust that we are managing the department in the right way. Also, when I said the truth is in the details, I would like to compare the rates for the 80 members of VICA to the rates of small businesses in my community. And I'll bet ya, they get a better rate. I bet they get a better rate than the residential community. And I'll bet we could balance the system better. So to say that we are 30 to 40% lower than, than the other utilities in the state, it may be true as a general class, but I doubt that it's true when you measure residential to residential, small business to small business, micro-business to micro-business, large business to large business. And if I'm wrong, you know, what could a ratepayer advocate harm? If you're doing such an effective job, they can't harm anything. On the other hand, they could build trust. So, this isn't, this isn't, for, for me, I don't know why we didn't do this last year. I don't know what's taking so long. I, I, I get tired of all these reports to end up with the same political decision. Uh, and frankly, I think all positions, all three positions, uh, are uniquely, uh, positioned to provide a benefit to the public. And, and I support all three. The ratepayer advocate, the ombudsman, and the, uh, and the inspector general. It's time that we allow our consumers of power and water services to have a better trust of that department. They own it. They deserve it. And you're not giving it to them. Now, and I haven't said one negative word about anybody at the Department of Water and Power. We all have tremendous respect for the people that work there. But we have a constituency that deserves full information. They deserve full transparency. And I'm, I'm gonna do everything I can to give it to them. And the harder you make it, the worse it's gonna be for you.
Okay, Mr. Carter's?
Well, this is one thing that I think, uh, neighborhood councils and chambers and people who sometimes get a little cynical might want to be happy about the fact that, um, we have a termed-out mayor. And there's a handful of people who want to run for mayor. And this looks like the kind of thing that people could really ride on and really try to go into the mayor's office on about being for the people, clamping down on rates, uh, uh, getting a lot more exposure and explanation and full view of the public, a third-person's eye and view on whether or not a lot of the changes and movement that is going on within the department makes sense, um, whether or not all of this green talk is really gonna affect rates. Uh, we all know it's gonna affect rates, but myself being an electrical engineer and a former businessman and a former state legislator and budget chairman and being on the committee that oversees the Department of Water and Power and all other power companies around the state, um, to this day, after those 12 years of experience and plus being in office, um, I believe that the information that we're getting from the Department of Water and Power on the potential rate changes just on the green talk is still not true. We're not getting the, the real numbers. We've heard numbers about, well, it might change somebody's, uh, monthly bill by a buck 72, or maybe even 3.49, or something like that. I'm of the opinion that if we go as far as, this current mayor and the department and the board seem to be concurring that this is where we want to go, for example, shutting down our biggest and cheapest energy supplier, um, which is our biggest coal plant. Uh, remember, ladies and gentlemen, we're still approximately 50% dependent on coal. And, um, Mr. Friedman, so that I, I don't, it doesn't sound like I'm speaking rhetorically and I'm speaking specifically, could you remind us what the, uh, marked cost is that we're getting from our biggest coal plant in Utah? What is costing us?
Well, you're correct. As of today, we're getting, oh, 44% of all of our energy from coal, and the, the plant in Utah is our largest coal plant.
What's the delivery price on that?
Uh, it's under, under five cents to go out.
Under five cents, okay. Now, if it, 44% is bouncing around about five cents or so, the cost for green energy, on average, these days, based on proposals, didn't you just receive some pretty big proposals recently?
Y- yes, sir. I have stated publicly that, uh, if you, uh, exchange five-cent coal for even eight-cent renewable, uh, there's serious upward pressure on rates. I mean, it's simple math.
We're, we're getting, we're getting proposals-
You, you use the phrase-
We're getting proposals at eight cents on renewable, and we're not signing as quickly as we can?
Well, we are.
Come on, come on, David, please, Mr. Friedman, tell me more what the average is on renewable energy contracts.
At the moment, is a more like 10 or 11 cents. We've got contracts we signed at 10 cents.
Yeah, but I'm saying on average, I'm guesstimating that we're probably gonna be closer to 12 to 14 cents, uh, on average, when you look at the whole panoply of the different kinds of energy sources that we're hoping to get and sign.
Let me just, uh, you know, I just want to point something out. You didn't want any staff here at the table, and I think it, it's actually hurting your presentation, because there's probably people here from the department who can actually answer his question.
I have no problem with-
I would urge you to rethink that position, okay? Because you're, you know, you're treading water here.
Well, I, I don't understand why somebody wouldn't want staff, but this is not personal at all.
Yeah, no, it, it, it's not-
I did.
To have staff who's more deeply involved in the issue and knows the ins and outs.
I've been, I've been known to ask a specific question now and then.
Me, me too. I, I, I want to do that, yeah.
Especially since this is a public meeting and we're talking about, uh, the Department of Water and Power that belongs to the public. Department of Water and Power doesn't belong to the city council, doesn't belong to the mayor, doesn't belong to the board, doesn't belong to any individual. It belongs to the people of Los Angeles, our constituents.
Yeah, you've got like one, two, three, four, five, six people here who might be able to help you answer these questions.
Sure. So, on, on that point, um, is, is it accurate or inaccurate to assume that by the time we're done over the next, let's just say over the next few months or the next five years, signing new power agreements, whether it's purchased power, whether it's we're running our own plants or what have you, is it fair to say that we could expect that the average cost for that renewable energy is gonna be closer to maybe 12 to 14% when you average that all out?
That's, that's accurate, including-
Question on the record?
I'm, I'm Aaron Ben Newman, I'm the senior assistant general manager in charge of the power system. You're, you're accurate, uh, council member. Because of the transmission costs added, we're talking delivery to the city of LA, including transmission, firming, and, and other auxiliary services that we will add to that, it will be close to that target.
Now, the, remind us again about how much is it costing us to get energy to the light switch here, including all those costs? What's, what's the round figure of how much it's costing us specifically from our largest coal plant in Utah?
So if, uh, the production of cost at the power plant in Utah is about four cents, plus about a cent, two cent and a half to get it home, you're talking around five cents, as Mr. Freeman mentioned.
Five, five to five and a half cents on the topic.
Five to five and a half cents.
Based on today's costs and LA, et cetera. So if we're getting 44% at five to five and a half cents, and if we're hearing promises from politicians and people within the department who are saying, "I, I think we could do this. I think we can go ahead and wean ourselves off of this dirty coal and then move toward, uh, renewable, uh, sources, green energy, et cetera", how is it then that the public can be told over and over and over by the department, "It's only gonna cost a little bit"? Is it really gonna cost a little bit, or is it gonna have a dramatic change in the rates to the customer? When I say dramatic, is it gonna be beyond a dollar or two or three a month on the average bill?
Well, sir, to the best of my recollection, I've never said it would cost a little bit.
No, this, this is all, see, I've been on, I've been on the council for six years, and I've been on and off of this committee and chaired it at one time, uh, and, and you have not said that, Mr. Friedman, so thank you very much. But I, we have listened to presentation after presentation where the department has downplayed the impacts of the renewable energy costs if we go in that direction. And it sounds like we will go in that direction, because there's several things pulling on us. One of them is our own will and want to do so. But there is the federal government as well, and the state government as well, that can and do impose responsibilities on us that require us to do so. And we could, in fact, isn't there something going on right now that could, in fact, cost our department upwards of a billion dollars a year and penalties and/or other costs if, if certain legislation passes?
Well, yes, sir, the legislation, as you know, AB 32 passed. Ms. Nichols is implementing a cap-and-trade system that will put a, uh, fee on carbon, so that the rates are gonna go up, uh, because the cost of coal will go up because of the carbon tax, so, uh, but that doesn't exist today. I have been going around-
Mr. Friedman, it doesn't exist today, but as long as the legislature's in session, can it exist tomorrow?
It will exist tomorrow.
Is the legislature of California, is the federal government right now moving in the direction of where we have to rethink our source of energy and the kind of energy that we're using, or not?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Which means we're either gonna pay for the cost of the kind of energy we're getting, or there's gonna be other governments that are gonna impose upon us for us to write checks, to write checks. They come from the ratepayers, to write checks to some agency or some organization that is gonna require us for us to write checks, and they will cash that check. That means that money will come out of the ratepayers.
You are absolutely correct.
If I may add, council member, also, is, is double jeopardy as far as paying for the carbon tax and also meeting the state mandate for 33% or more. So, 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 you have, we have to spend on both buckets.
And the more we, you're absolutely right, the more we spend on that, the less we have a vehicle to move toward renewable.
Uh, councilman, I have been going around quoting your words at a prior, uh, session. You said, "The harsh truth needs to be told", and this is what you're laying out this morning.
Exactly, but the thing is, I'm telling you, as a policymaker and as a ratepayer, okay? I believe that we are not getting enough of the facts in a form and fashion that we deserve to receive them in these committee hearings, at the full council, and in reports that are provided to us as well. Now, if I, as a policymaker, feel that that is the case, how do you think the ratepayer feels? The ratepayer does not set these meetings, the ratepayer does not set the agenda for these meetings. The ratepayer, uh, with all due respect, Mr. Friedman, doesn't get you to sit in front of a microphone and ask questions directly to the ratepayer. But we do. And as a result of that, all of those discussions, prior to you being here, I've, I've, now, it's, I think you're the fourth general manager, I think, that I've worked with, and easily a dozen different people who are members of the board, and dozens of, of staff that give us information. After all of that, just my short six years on the council, I already see a pattern. I believe that there's a pattern at the Department of Water and Power. And the pattern tells me that you resist, not you personally, but the department resists giving the real information so that we could understand and/or implement good, sound policy in front of the public, and informing the public the ramifications and the effects of those policy decisions. So now that being the case, what we have before us is three items on the agenda today that talk to, they might use different words about what they want to call this person, an ombudsman or what have you, but the bottom line is it all spells the same thing. As Councilmember Alarcon put very accurately, the amount of trust that the public has, the ratepayer has, for the- ratepayer has, for the department that they own, the trust is very low. And unfortunately, from this Councilmember, my trust and my patience is very low as well. I've lost patience with the Department. And I don't even want to speak to the dynamics of the politics within the Department, be it the union and/or the Board, and/or the idea that at any given moment in time, the Mayor's staff says, "Well, we don't tell the Board what to do. We disappoint them, they do whatever they want." And then sometimes the Council, we're even culprits in this as well, where we go ahead and we gloss over some decisions and maybe we don't pound on the decisions as much as we should. Maybe we don't pound the truth out as much as we should. So therefore, maybe we should take it out of the hands of the politicians and the people over at the Department and allow someone else to bring some clarity and some truth and some openness to what is going on with the Department of Water and Power here in Los Angeles. Are we not the largest Department of Water and Power in the country?
Yes.
As far as municipal?
Yes, sir.
Publicly owned, right?
Yes, sir.
Owned by the community. We're the largest one in the country. And, Mr. Friedman, I'm going to ask you for your opinion at this time. Do you feel that the way the Department is run right now and the politics, as you've experienced them and if you've seen them, and as you're experiencing them today, do you feel that this Department is improving and getting better, or do you think that there's a lot of room for this Department to fall off the rails and really have a bad situation?
We have a huge opportunity for improvement, a huge opportunity for improvement. In other words, I don't think we're cutting the mustard. I tend to agree with what you're saying.
Are we cutting the mustard, using your words? Are we cutting the mustard when it comes to implementing our infrastructure requirements in a timely manner and in an efficient manner at this point in time?
Yes, sir. I went over that with the staff yesterday in great detail. We have improved the reliability of the distributions, and we bought transformers. We're doing all those things.
But I beg to differ. The plan is better today, but the actual implementation on the ground today still has a lot to be desired.
They're doing, they're installing a lot of additional...
Better, but still not anywhere near at the, at the rate and the fashion in which we have it on paper that we see that we need to do so.
They are approaching that level. I mean, I was encouraged by the report that I got from all the detailed managers yesterday. Obviously, there's room for improvement, but we're a whole lot better than we were two years ago in the infrastructure.
And also, I think it's important that we also expose some of the truths to the public. Even politics plays into what we can call renewable. Is hydroenergy renewable energy?
To a certain megawatts, it's thirty-seven...
Of course it is.
Yes, Mr. Friedman is answering the question in a, in a much more non-political fashion. Whether it's hydroenergy large or hydroenergy small, the bottom line is it's still the same source, it's still the same technology, it's still coming from the same category. But in California, don't we have two categories of hydroenergy?
Yes.
One we can count as renewable energy and one that we can't?
Yes, sir.
And that has more to do with politics than anything else?
Yes, sir.
Right? But that, those politics infiltrated their way into the state legislature so that the legislature of California has said and stated, if it's hydro of X amount or smaller, then we can count that as renewable energy. If it's X amount or larger, we can't count that as renewable energy.
Yes, sir, and I think the city...
What's that threshold?
The thirty megawatts.
Thirty megawatts.
The state, ours is thirty-seven. The City Council adopted policies thirty-seven, so...
Is there a big dam in Nevada that we get some energy?
Hoover Dam, yes.
Hoover Dam. So, Hoover Dam, is that hydroenergy?
Of course.
Yes. Are we able to count that as part of our renewable energy source?
No, sir.
And what percentage of our, of our energy is, is the Hoover Dam? I mean, the Hoover Dam.
We have about four to five percent.
Yeah, this is about a week ago, one of your, your staff said it's about four to five percent.
Yeah.
Okay? But we can't count that, right?
We cannot count it by the legal definition.
With all due respect, sir, that's a decision that the City Council made.
How's that?
The, the City Council decided that the Hoover Dam power could not be counted in our renewable portfolio.
Sure, because we decided...
Because the state did, yeah.
We decided to adopt the language and the threshold that the state adopted, correct?
Yeah.
But all I'm saying is it started with the state.
Yes, sir.
And, and that has more to do with politics of the environmental community and people with certain opinions, etc. It really has nothing to do with the fact of the matter is that hydroenergy is hydroenergy.
Of course. I mean, you're speaking to someone who ran the Tennessee Valley Authority. We were all hydro in the thirties and forties, all renewable, but it doesn't count because they're old dams and, you know, there are other, as you say, the politics of it went the other way.
So, Madam Chair, women, my, my point on the example of the hydroenergy is just another example that perhaps it doesn't hurt to have another, literally, a third person to be involved in the discussion so that they don't have to adhere to or worry about the politics of the legislature, of the Council, of the Mayor, of the Board, of the staff or what have you, and they can just call it like it is.
Right.
And then once they call it like it is, then we can either scramble, or we can adhere, or we can go ahead and make good policy decisions in full view of the public with another rail of truth staring us in the face when we're making these decisions.
Third rail.
Third rail, sure.
And you know what happens on the third rail?
Yep, if you touch it.
You get electrocuted.
Exactly.
Okay.
I mean, we could go on forever.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas, we could go on forever. All right, so, this is what we are going to do, and I just want to note for the record, you know, the report that was submitted today is dated December the twenty-ninth, two thousand eight, okay? And it was done by Mr. Nahai, and much of it is contra to the proposals that we have made here amongst the Councilmembers who are here, including Mr. Garcetti. And so what I, I would like to do, in order to be straightforward, so that we don't come from a negative position and have to articulate from negative to positive, I'm going to reiterate my request that the CLA and the CAO and the City Attorney consolidate these three motions into one. They will come back with a report back, and they will gather the information, and we will put on the record, and then we can discuss it in committee one more time, then move it forward to Council. I think it'll be a lot more straightforward for the other Councilmembers to digest. Mr. CLA, do I need to go through my points again?
No, I think we have them on the record already.
Okay, all right, all right. But today's exchange just highlights, I think, in a micro way, why we need to move forward on these three proposals. And I appreciate your time here, but we will hold this item in committee, and we will take it up at the next committee. So I asked the CLA to work with my office to adjust the schedule so that we can take it up at the next committee, and even if it means that we have to hold a special meeting, let's just get this done and knock it out and take it forward to Council.
Okay.
Any other comments? That was eight, nine, and ten.
Eight, nine, and ten.
Yes. Now that we, we do have a quorum, we can jump back to item three.
Item three, Madam Chair, the recommendation was to disapprove of the item at the request of the Department inasmuch as there's new information that impacts that potential agreement. So they plan to take that new information and come back to Council when that item is finalized. It would be a disapproval without prejudice.
We do have one public speaker on this item. It's Dr. Clyde Williams. Dr. Williams?
Also as well, Madam Chair, prior to the quorum, you had approval on item number one and two.
Okay. Without objection on one and two?
Correct.
Okay, is that all right, Mr. Alarcon? Great. All right, Dr. Williams, number three, and then we can move on that one.
All part of the, I'm sorry, Dr. Clyde Williams, four one one five, Berth Road, El Sereno, Northeast LA. Also liaison, DWP, Neighborhood Council, MOU member. Basically, Nylund. Why, why are we doing it there before we do it in L.A. City? Where are we going? Again, where's the plan? If there's a plan, please provide the plan and show how Nylund is going to be a part of that plan and what our long-term commitments are. Because as a solar project, they are going to need power lines. Where are the power lines? What are, what's the existing power lines? Is this part of the geothermal? Also, is it going to use the same land? You can put solar on top of geothermal in many places, maybe that's part of it, but we don't know. And how do we find out? The Neighborhood Councils depend upon a liaison. The liaison depends upon information, but we can't get information. We don't even know what the budget is for next year. So, I'd highly recommend that you require this to be placed in the context of an overall plan, say for the next twenty years, because as a professional, I had to do twenty-year programs for the city of Cairo, which had a lot more people.
Thank you very much, Dr. Williams. My committee members, if there is no objection, we are going to refer this back to the Department without prejudice so they can address new information associated with this project. Is that, Mr. Cardenas, going to refer this back to the Department without objection?
Without objection.
Okay, great. All right, so that'll be the order on that.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
Madam Chair, you have items number four, five, and six. If you want to get to item number seven to spend time on the comprehensive solar plan...
Yeah.
You could dispense with these items rather quickly. We recommend approval on all three of them.
All right, we do have Dr. Williams on item six. There's no cards on item four. Are there any objections to approving item four? Okay, so that'll be without objection for item number five. No objection, that'll be approved. Item number six, Dr. Williams?
Pretty much the same comments as for Nylund. However, I do understand what's going on there, I think, but again, we need to know an overall plan because, remember, I've, well, I've worked in Owens Valley, and I know some of the animosity that people have there towards L.A. And it's a question as to, if we're going to do major solar developments there in order to mitigate the dust, let's see the calculations, let's see the work. If CDM is going to be doing it, keep it in public sessions, not only for L.A., but also for Owens Valley, because they have suffered a great deal from L.A. Why doesn't L.A. suffer first before we go outside not only L.A. city limits, but also L.A. county limits, and maybe even to Mexico? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any comments, questions, discussions on, so that'll, we'll prove that without objection.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, next item?
Item number seven, release of DWP report concerning the community outreach plan for solar and the status of the comprehensive solar plan.
Okay, let's hear from DWP.
I'll accept that. Nice.
Okay. Please proceed.
Madam Chair, we have a staff presentation.
You have a staff presentation?
For, for you, I just wanted to say a word or two, if I may, to kick it off. When I became Inner General Manager, I discovered that our staff had some brilliant ideas about how to lower the cost of solar power. Their ideas, which were already there, waiting when I got there, was to design solar panels in the lake bed in a manner that they would control the dust rather than using water so that if this works, we would save, you know, huge quantities of water, which we desperately need, control the dust, and be able to generate solar power where we already have transmission corridors and where the sun is probably hotter than any other place in California. So, so I encouraged them to proceed with this idea, and we tested it out in wind tunnels, and it looks like it can work. I also personally went up to the Owens Valley, spent two days, and we had a series of meetings. They were not perfect meetings because they weren't public, but we did have...
There you go. That's why I have, you and I, you know, we get into it, okay?
But we did meet with just everybody and their uncle up there.
That makes me very unhappy, you know that.
I understand, but I'm confessing.
You can't do that anymore.
I'm confessing.
No, no, but I don't want you to do it anymore.
We've agreed not to.
You have to have public meetings that are publicly noticed from now on.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm actually thinking about going up there and doing it with you.
Well, we, we are, we're announcing one in the first week in January, or we change the date at your convenience, but...
Yeah, okay. You know what?
But, but I think...
Maybe we should go with you and make sure we get a good turnout on the record.
That would be great.
Yeah.
With that, I'll turn this over to the folks that are doing the hard work.
Thank you.
All right. My name is Mike Webster. I'm responsible for the renewables program. My background, I just came from our wholesale marketing group, through ten years of doing transactions, electricity as well as renewable transactions, and I am now trying to build our renewables portfolio moving forward. So today, what I'd like to do is give you a background of what we told the public on our solar plan. You have that before you. It's the orange handout that, that went out. It's the presentation that was made to the public. I'll summarize that very, very briefly, and then I'll summarize some of the public comments we have received in that process. And then lastly, if it's the will of the committee, we can talk a little bit more about the details of the solar program as we're starting to flush those details out. So first, the renewables program was summarized, and the solar plan was characterized as a solar generation component, because it's a component of the overall renewables program. It's not a separate standalone plan, but it's part of the power system as part of the renewables program, and there's three goals. It's to integrate solar to maintain and enhance reliability of the power system, support long-term customer benefits, and then lastly, to stimulate the economy, create jobs, and industry locally. And what we said in the plan was that we would strive for ten percent solar energy delivery by 2020. That represents about twelve hundred and eighty megawatts. And there were five tools in the toolbox that we've identified that we could use. The first was the state-required solar incentive program, where we provide incentives for customers to put solar on their rooftops. The second was a feed-in tariff-type program, where customers or developers could install solar, they could be connected to the grid, and we would pay a tariff rate under a long-term contract. The third is a sun shares-type program, which is really a subset of others. It's really a way for the public to get involved in financing or participating in solar. For example, if they couldn't put solar on their rooftop but wanted to have a solar facility, we could aggregate a bunch of customers together, do a one-megawatt cost-effective plant, and they could participate in that. That's the sun shares. The fourth was the utility-built program, the program where, as a power system, it's important for us to build, operate, and control solar so that we can integrate effectively in the power system. And the last tool in the toolbox was our large-scale power purchase agreement. So these would be very, very large, done by developers, and then we would procure through a power purchase agreement, and then, over time, be able to purchase that plant and own and operate that plant after all the tax benefits were exhausted. So now, the public participation process, there were six regional workshops to seek this feedback, and also to start the public scoping process as required by CEQA. And all the workshops were conducted in September and were professionally facilitated by a third party. What we wanted to do is get the Department of Water and Power kind of out of the mix and allow the third party to have this very, very open dialogue with our participants to extract all the comments fairly and equally amongst the attendees. There were six hundred and seventy-five attendees, and the format was such that we did a group presentation, and that's the presentation you see in front of you. And then what we did is we broke into three breakout sessions. The first breakout session was on solar incentive and sun shares. We did another short, quick presentation on, on some of the details related to that, and then we opened it up to comments and discussion and questions and answers. The second breakout session was on the utility-built program, combined with the large-scale power purchase agreements, and then the third breakout session was the feed-in tariff. And there were two rounds of the breakout sessions, so each participant could go to two of the three sessions. two of the three sessions, they wanted to go to all three, then they had to go to another workshop. Now, the comments were captured on easel boards and comment cards, and what we, and there were hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of comments that were captured, and so what our professionals did is they coalesced those comments into themes, using a computer program designed for identifying word patterns, et cetera, so they could pull them all together into a management group. Now, the comments generally focused on tuning the existing programs, there were no comments related to wholesale changes to the plan that was presented, but more tuning and program implementation, refinements of existing programs, or concerns that we want, they wanted to address as we roll out new programs.
Let me ask you a quick question now, you have a lesson from the previous solar effort, how do you incorporate what you learned from the demise of that, and how will you adjust features of the plan that we're trying to develop now to address stakeholder and community concerns?
Well, specifically, what we're doing is by capturing these comments, then we are responding to each one of these comments. Now, some of them can be incorporated immediately, and some of them will be incorporated as we roll out the program, so for example, feed-in tariff is not an existing program, we can capture and roll those programs out in the future. So that's our direction now, I'm not sure I fully answered your question.
I guess I'm looking for a thorough examination of how measure how and why measure B failed, and what we can do to make sure that it, you know, the similar measure, while it may not go on the ballot necessarily, but as we work more collaboratively in a more open fashion, to develop something that has much more widespread consensus.
I'm not sure, you want to try addressing that?
I don't think there was ever a lack of public interest in pursuing solar power, my own observation is that there was considerable unhappiness with the way in which we went about it.
And the lessons learned-
And the lesson learned is to have more public involvement, we are, but also to move ahead on the feed-in tariff, we have a proposal before our commission now, and also to basically show more concern about the cost of the thing, and be sure that we're not going ahead with hundreds of megawatts before we know what this is going to cost. And so my approach is to go ahead with a feed-in tariff, see if it works, see if we get some business that way, and also go ahead with the utility approach, but get some real hard data on what this is going to cost us before we commit to hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of megawatts, and so I think there's caution on the cost side, and also a need to be sure that the business community, which is interested in the feed-in tariff, gets sufficient attention, as well as the utility approach, so we are proceeding along those lines, and rather than talking about what Huron said or some consultant, I'd like to have some real hard numbers on what, doing a little bit cost, so that we will know whether we can go for a whole lot or not.
All right, well, I suggest that you get those real hard numbers ready, because we're going to move this through committee today, and I think from this point, what will follow is you need to make the time to make sure that all stakeholders have a chance to review the draft plan, and I want you to keep in mind that this committee and the council intends to take an active role in the development of this plan, so when you go to council, I think you should expect to get even more input with your draft plan. I also think, and I recall that the department stated that it would provide information from the solar workshops to the Board of Commissioners, and then proceed with the development of a solar proposal, I'm going to recommend an even more collaborative process that includes the committee, the council, the mayor, the CAO, CLA, and stakeholders, and require that we do this, so that we can ensure that we've done the due diligence, and that the consensus component is fully vetted.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, Mr. Dr. Williams has a card on seven, as does Jack, don't worry, Jack, I was just about to say it, calm down, let Dr. Williams and Jack come on up here, Jack Umpraville, and Jack, you've got two cards on seven.
I thought I didn't have this.
No, you're good, you're good. All right, so if you'd let them have a seat, and we are going to move this forward to council, and then vet it more fully there. Okay, Mr. Dr. Clyde Williams and Jack Umpraville.
El Cerrano.
El Cerrano. Dr. Clyde Williams, El Cerrano, northeast LA, son of B, that's in the general comment. Six hundred and seventy-five people, wow, we have four million people in the city of Los Angeles, how many neighborhood councils received it? And how can we understand it? It's so generalized that even in the feed-in tariffs, even in the, how can people help? We weren't given numbers, we weren't given a plan, a typical five thousand square foot lot, hey, make an easy model for people to really understand what's going on and the costs of it, because we don't know what we're getting ourselves into. Hard numbers, forget it, you won't get any hard numbers, because over the next five years, things are going to change, so it has to be responsive to the marketplace. As neighborhood council representative, it's tragic. Thank you.
Madam Chairwoman, on that note, my staff reminded me that there was one of these meetings in the San Fernando Valley, and it's reported back to us that no one from the community showed up, which I think is almost impossible, it's impossible to actually have a meeting like that and have nobody from the public show up, so what I'd like-
Which meeting was that? San Fernando?
Well, they may have had more than one meeting, but anyway, on that note, whether or not two people showed up, or five thousand people showed up, obviously five thousand didn't show up, but my request to the department is, if they could get to all the members of this committee, a copy of all of the documents that went out to the public, and to explain to us the fashion and form that those notices went out, who they went out to, who the, whether it be individual addresses or organizations, et cetera, for us to get a full vetting of how the public was informed of each one of these meetings, and how much of the public was informed directly, how much of it was done by general announcements such as newspapers, commercials, et cetera, and how much of it was mailouts directly, and to who they, what universes they went out to on each one of the meetings that was held.
Department, you get that? Okay, thank you.
You did, just one little comment, you did indicate one element here, trust, neighborhood councils don't trust DWP anymore, the communities don't trust DWP anymore.
Well, let's not just pick on DWP, do neighborhood councils trust the city council?
No.
Come on, be honest.
They don't trust anybody!
Being very political.
Thank you.
We trust some people.
No, you don't!
Rather than go down the list of all the organizations and individuals-
It's not your fault. No, 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 you don't trust anybody, that's fine, okay, let Jack have his turn, thank you.
Before you start my time, I want to make a comment on your numbers with regards to the solar energy and the various costs. One of the sheets, there was a spreadsheet that was put out by DWP that basically showed the cost of various power. Coal was about a nickel, solar votaic, which is the in-basin solar power, was forty to seventy cents, knocked down, then it got knocked down to like seventeen to thirty cents, assuming tax credits, accelerated depreciation, big efficiencies, you know, there were all the various assumptions there, so if you need that chart, I can probably find it for you very easily.
Thank you. Now, for your time, please.
The outreach stunk. We got a PowerPoint presentation, there were no numbers, there were no costs, there was no impact on ratepayers, none, zero. The only thing that was knocked in there, was in there, was basically telling the ratepayers and the voters of LA to stick it, in that they basically said that we are not going to have competitive bidding, we're going to put in, as opposed to being utility-owned, it's going to be utility-built, which is essentially code for the DWP and the IBW to do this. If you look at the PAA consulting reports, that's going to cost billions extra, let's say one to two billion dollars extra, and then you double that because of the interest factor, the eight percent transfer fee, and the ten percent utility tax. And we're going to get clobbered on this, this was a disingenuous con job, snow job as it was described, it was terrible, and it stinks, and they need to go back to the drawing board and get real numbers for real people and do some grown-ups, this is why we need a ratepayers advocate, thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, Larry Matsui, is Larry Matsui still here?
Yes.
Come on up. This is our last card during public comment.
Madam Chair, Councilman Cardenas, Hello, good morning, my name is Larry Matsui. I missed the special meeting that was held on November twenty-fourth, but I didn't listen to the audio. In that meeting, the matter of the access to the Crawley Lake recreational facility was discussed, I believe Mr. McDaniels indicated that he's working on a report, and he was targeting, I believe he referenced December sixteenth, he may have meant today, to have that report submitted, so I'm just following up to find out what the status is of that review.
We don't have the report, and the item is not on the agenda today, I will check with the CLA and see when we might be able to put it back on the agenda.
Well, I discussed the matter with Department of Water and Power, it looks like something we could resolve in January, your first meeting then.
And if you'd like, so you don't have to inconvenience yourself, get the direct number for the CLA, the chief legislative analyst who's working on the agenda and putting the items together, so that you can come down here when it is on the agenda.
Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that marks the end of our public comment period, the end of our committee meeting, thank you very much.